We will show up here shortly. We'll start our meetings with an invocation and a pledge, if you'd care to join us, please stand.
Eternal Father, we're grateful for this day and the many blessings we've all already experienced here in the Golden Isles of Georgia. We ask blessings upon the staff and the commissioners here tonight and those who are here in the public. We ask protection for our first responders and our men and women in uniform wherever they serve. May we actually bless this meeting and all that we do today. In your name we pray. Amen. I plead with the wishes to the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Under general business, we approve the minutes for the special call joint work session of the islands and mainland planning commission held on May 4th, 2022. And the minutes of the regular meeting of the island planning commission held on May 17th, 2022. Subject to any corrections.
I move that we approve the call joint work session of island mainly planning commission held on May 4th, 2022. And the regular meeting of the island planning commission held on May 17th, 2022. Subject to any necessary corrections.
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand. Thank you. It's unanimous. I think the first, since I read the meeting, procedures, the planning commission makes final decisions on village preservation permits. It makes recommendations through the board of commissioners on rezonings. The island planning commission allows public comments for preservation permits. The commission holds public hearings for rezonings. The planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on request and to address any conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to 30 minutes for each side. With a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the time allocated. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate his speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Thank you. First item on our agenda tonight is the village preservation item. This is VP 5037, 202 Mallory signage, request for village preservation design review approval for a new sign on the existing building at 202 Mallory Street, St. Simon's Island, parcel number 0404646. The property is owned village mixed use and island preservation design overlay district. The land portal applicant, this was deferred from May 17th. Is the applicant here? Thank you, sir. Ms. Leaf, you want?
Yes, thank you. Stephanie Leaf, planning manager. This is VP 5037, 202 Mallory Street. As the chairman mentioned, last meeting, the applicant was not available to attend at that meeting. And so the commission did defer it to enable the applicant to be here. So this is a village preservation design review for a new sign. This is a building that does have a signage already on it, so this is a retroactive permit request. It did begin as a code enforcement complaint about the sign, as well as some unauthorized trimming of the tree in the right of way. The code enforcement case has been resolved as applicant has complied with everything that the county has required on this. So this is the new sign. And you may recall, last year, coast to coast Gulf Cart Rentals got village preservation approval to do a different sign. It's kind of hard to see in this photo, but it's, it was a smaller yellow sign. And they did receive approval for that and they have since removed that sign and placed this on the, on the building. The requirement is maximum of 24 square feet. The sign does meet that. And these are some adjacent building facades, just to give a sense of the character of that particular area. And then these are your potential motions this evening. And I'm happy to answer any questions and applicant is here this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. Do we have any questions for staff?
Who, do we know who installed the sign? Was it a local sign company or was it?
Signorama.
Owner?
Signorama, is that?
The name's on the frame.
Yeah, I guess. Signorama.
So they're local, right? Aren't they? Or they, where are they?
I, I'm not sure. I know, yeah, I think they have, I'm not sure if they're, if they have offices in other places, but any idea of a?
Why do they, why do they not know that this has to be approved?
I'm not sure. I won't, I can't answer that. But I know the commission in the past has requested that county send out correspondence to property owners. So we could look at sending it to local sign companies as well, just to inform them to ensure everyone knows the regulations for village preservation.
Because I feel like every company I've ever dealt with, as far as like signs and getting permits and everything, they're pretty well versed in, you know, what's allowed and I think it's a little ridiculous that they don't know this or haven't taken the time to familiarize themselves with these signs in the village area, because it's continual.
Yeah, there is.
And then it's always asking forgiveness instead of permission.
Right.
And it's, to me, it's getting a little old.
Well, I agree. We, we do have quite extensive sign, sign ordinance. And I hope that any, any company involved in installing signs in Glen County would be, would be familiar with our sign ordinance. And, and also we were approving this after the fact, obviously, at this point. But Ms. Leaf, at this point, as far, as far as, as far as staff knows, they are in compliance with the proper size, et cetera?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, if that's all the questions from staff, we'll hear from the applicant. Please, if you'd.
If you'd like to go to the podium for the microphone, thank you.
Please come to the podium and state your name, please. Maybe you can enlighten us a little bit as to, as to how this went down.
So my name is Gil Schramm. So the owner of Signorama, he, he's aware of the, the size that it has to be and that he had to get a permit. And we kind of, I told him from ahead of time that, you know, you have to go through like the village, you know, approval and thing. He said, yeah, don't worry, we've done it before. And I think he just went to get the permit from the city and got that approved and the size. And then went ahead and did the installation before getting approved by the IBC, IPC.
So you say he got approval from the city?
He got approval from the city for the size of it. So he had a permit to go ahead and do it, but he never got approval from, from.
Well, this is the county. Yeah, you're in the county, the you understand the difference between the city and the county, city of Brunswick versus Glen County?
Definitely, yeah. So I, I mean, you know, I kind of put it in his hands. I told him, you know, make sure that you get approved by the village, because they have their special rules down here. And this part of the, you know, the village.
What, what did, huh? Did you make the application for the previous sign? I think that was done by, by the small sign that was there before?
No, that was the management before me.
Okay, so this was, this was after then?
Yeah, after then, yeah.
You're the new manager of the business now?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it the same, the same ownership?
Same ownership, yeah.
You're just the new manager?
Yep.
Any other questions for, for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Now, we do take public comments. Is there anyone that would like to comment on this application or have questions? Hearing none. Commission?
Before we leave this, I'd like Ms. Leaf, you know, I think I've said this before, seven and a half years on this commission and I can't remember one of the signs in the village that's come before us in the right way. And I, I know we can't instruct you, but maybe we can ask the attorney to write a letter to at least the sign companies to get, let them know what the procedure is before they put a sign up. Because this, this has just continued month after month and, you know, it is, it's kind of the cart before the horse and we need to do it the right way. So that's all I want to say about it. So tired, I'm tired of the signs down here in the village.
Well, I think, I mean, I agree with the signage, but it's also, I feel like since I've been on here, everybody that has been in that village preservation has come up here and asked for forgiveness instead of permission. I don't think we've had one applicant.
I can't remember.
You know, which I, I mean.
Well, well, actually, we did have one and that was the first sign they put up.
Well, okay, all right. Well, that was last year then, because I mean, that was.
That's what's, that's why I was sort of surprised when this went up without, without.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that.
Without the permit.
You know, it's disappointing that Signorama is not aware of this. And I'm, I'm sure that they probably are, they just didn't feel like, because this is a process and it takes time. And they probably didn't feel like taking the time to do it.
Well, we have to have sign, sign permits for everywhere in the county, do we not?
Yes.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
On any sign, right? So I mean, it's not like it's a secret and the village is somewhere special. It's really not.
Well, at least this sign looks better than the last one.
It's not yellow?
Yeah, it looks better.
Okay. I know, Sid. Hey, you put the sign back up a second. I, I want to make one, one comment as an architect. It, it looks like there's a white cloud or something behind the lettering. Maybe the applicant, it, it just seems like it, it needs to be fixed or something. I don't know if it's leftover from a previous application or whatever it is, some mortar. You can kind of see it behind coast to coast and then again at the bottom. It's just a, this is an architect talking. Yes, sir.
So, yeah, that's something from the previous owner of the building.
Right.
I would like to paint, you know, with the color of red, you know.
Yeah, well, please, please ask me if you can do that. That would make it look a lot better. Thank you. Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve the application without changes. Sorry. Here we, I make a motion to approve the application without changes as is.
Okay.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your right hand. That's unanimous. Thank you, sir. Next is a public hearing item. This is ZM 5052. Burns tract rezone, request for approval of a rezone of approximately 22.4 acres located at 112 and 116 Burns. Is that Lodge?
Landing.
Landing, okay. It, it just says L D G. Burns, Burns Landing. I'm not going to read all these, all these numbers. Is that, is that okay? Will? Thank you. This is, this is, let me, I get through all of this. There's, there's several owners as well. They're all Burns related. May I say that? And I, I'm not going to read all that, but, and the proposed uses is one family residential with a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. The current zoning is forest agriculture. Ms. Leaf?
Mr. Crystal.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Morey's Postal Planning and Zoning. As the chairman said, this request for approval of rezoning for approximately 22.4 acres that are currently zoned forest agricultural, the request is to go to R21 family residential. And single family homes on lots, minimum sized lots of 20,000 square feet or larger permitted uses in both FA and R20 currently. The applicants are requesting approval of the rezoning requests due to their concern that the proposed Glen County zoning ordinance update will make their existing homes and vacant lots within the area of rezoning non-conforming uses rather than permitted uses by right. And this is the zoning map. The area within the black outline is the area of rezoning. It's exactly in between the land trust Sinclair tract and German Village. And this is a survey of the area of rezoning. The lots with the red numbers are the lots that currently have residential structures on them. And these are permitted uses in the current FA zoning district and the R20 zoning district that they'd like to go to. As you can, as previously said, single family homes on lots of 20,000 square feet or larger permitted uses in both. Forest agricultural, of course, has a lot more that you can do on the land. And this is the rezoning justification included in the application. I'm not going to read it verbatim since it was included in the staff report and the full application was included. And this is the, the table that's caused the concern. As you can see in discussion draft V1 of the zoning ordinance update, minimum sized lots in FA. If the lots on sewer would go to minimum size five acre lots. And if on septic, it would be a minimum size of a 10 acre lot. And R20, by the way, would stay exactly the same pretty much, except for site coverage requirements. And these are your actions and I would imagine that many of the applicants are here tonight.
It looks like it.
Are there any questions for staff? I've, I've got, I've got a couple. This, this is, so, so the reason for the rezoning is, is the issue that is coming up with, with the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. Is that, is that the biggest reason?
That's right. If this table were enacted as it's, as it is right there, that's where the concern would come up.
I can understand.
Right.
But if, if you would, put the, put the map back up or the plat back up that, that shows all that. Are those, are those currently planted lots?
Yes, I included the plats in the staff report.
Right, right. So, so those are planted lots and they're, and, and recorded as such?
Yes.
I would assume. How many of them are current, are currently built on?
It was like four.
Those four.
Okay, four. And I, and I guess the question is, and, and maybe this is for our attorney, is, is, is there protection now that those lots stay, stay lots or are they grandfathered in?
So I'm not speaking in generalities because I haven't looked at these lots in particular. And obviously it's going to depend upon what the zoning view group does with the proposed provisions of the zoning ordinance. But, and it depends upon how many lots were created. So I'm putting a lot of qual, oh, sorry, a lot of qualifications on that in the beginning. But generally speaking, and again, this is under our current ordinance, so that's really all I can speak to is you have a, a non-conforming lot that was existed, that existed at the time of enactment of the zoning ordinance. So for our purposes of our discussion, that would be the enactment of the new zoning ordinance, if it is enacted. Generally speaking, those are considered non-conforming existing lots. And under our current ordinance, if you have a non-exist, a, a non-conforming existing lot that existed as of the February 1 of 1966, you can build on that as if it were a conforming lot with certain restrictions on height and width and that sort of thing. It would depend upon what the new zoning ordinance says about non-conforming lots. I, I think it's probably generally the same.
I think it is.
But, you know, a lot of these depend upon particular circumstances of the, the lot itself, that lot, how it was created, when it was created. That sort of thing. So I'm going to have to speak in generalities. I can't speak to these lots in particular, say what would happen to them.
Right. So, so at this point, you don't know whether or not these were, these were created before 1966?
And again, if we're talking about concerns about the, the ordinance to be enacted, it really depend more about what that ordinance says about non-conforming lots. Which we just don't, we don't know what that's going to say right now. So I guess the best I can tell you about these lots is I don't know at this point how they would be treated under the new ordinance.
Right, I understand, but I'm, I'm talking specifically about the existing ordinance. I mean.
Right, again, I, I don't know the particular, I haven't looked into these to see when they were created and that sort of thing. But generally speaking, our ordinance, if you are substandard lot as of the date of the adoption of zoning ordinance, then you can build on it. Assuming it was illegally created lot at the time, but there are restrictions on what you can do with it.
Any other questions for, for staff? If not, we'll hear from the applicant.
I'm sorry, just real quick, what is the current lot? What is, I can't read on this thing. Are they, what's the width of those?
They're 177 feet wide on the small ones right there and they're about three quarters of an inch. They aren't conforming correctly.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. You will, I hear from the applicant. They may be able to answer some of these questions for us. Thank you.
You ready for us?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, please, if you would.
Thank you. And there'll be three others. Could you go back to the one that showed the other map, please? That one, that's perfect. Thank you. My name's Alan Burns. I live at 167 Burns Landing, which is right here. That's one of the four houses on the property. First off, I'd like to thank you for your time to hear this this evening. As you can tell, this is a family owned property. It's been owned by this family since the 1960s. And some of the lots in here now are currently in third and fourth generation of ownership since then. So our family is, is vested in this property. And we've been on the island as a family, not these people, but our family for now, in some cases, some of the little ones back there, nine generations on the island. So we're, we've been here a little bit. This property originally was two tracts of property. And the northern tract, which is right here, was purchased by my grandfather. And the southern tract here was purchased by my uncle. Both of those were purchased in the 60s. And when they were purchased, there were two houses located on the property, one here and one here. The northern one is still there. It has been renovated. In 1965, my uncle built a new house and demolished the old house that was on site. In 1970, my father built our house here. And then in 1993, my cousin Rob, wherever he is, back over there, Rob built his house right there. Other than that, there's, property has stayed pretty much same as it was. Now, in answer to the question on when the lots were subdivided, this one was subdivided after 66. This one was, and all of these across here. When my grandmother, before she passed away, she needed all of these lots to her grandchildren. And they have stayed in that ownership ever since on that side. The area to the south of us is zoned R6, has been that. That's one of our oldest subdivisions on the island. The area to the north is planned development. And even though it is owned by the land trust, it is still a planned development. The lots are approved in there. And the lots are medium density residential. They vary between 7,000 and 20,000 square foot lots. The, the zoning of our area and the area north of us, which is now planned development and you can see down here, was all zoned initially when the county started zoning as forest and agriculture. We didn't ask to be FA, but that's what we are. Since that time, everything that has been done on our property meets the FA zoning district. So if no changes were made to that, we would continue to be in compliance with that. Current FA requirement requires 20,000 square foot lots or greater. Our smallest lot is 33,500 square feet on the property. And we don't propose cutting any smaller lots than that. The proposed change to FA would require 10 acre minimum lots. So every single lot you see on there would be non-conforming based on the new ordinance. And would, would be a non-conforming use. The, of all of these lots, we want to continue in all of these as residential uses. Under FA, in the proposed ordinance, a residential use is not a permitted use. It is a conditional use. You have to come ask permission to continue as residential or to use it as residential. And the non-conforming section of the new, new ordinance, section 911, basically states that while you can have non-conformities, can continue until they're removed, but not to encourage their survival, except as specifically stated. This goes out of its way basically to eliminate non-conforming long term. And that's the clause that really bothers us more than anything else. Now, the comprehensive plan for this area is medium density residential. And that covers all of this area, this area, and further north. It covers all of the Sinclair property, is currently and has been medium density residential since the comp plan was approved four years ago by the planning commissions and by the county commission. We are requesting R20, that is the largest single family zoning district. All of the lots under R20 will be conforming in current and proposed ordinances. The lot sizes and setbacks match the current FA ordinance. There is no increase in density with this rezoning request going from FA to R20. This rezoning will restrict the use of the properties. And he showed you the list earlier of everything that was allowed in FA versus residential. And all we want to be is residential. The, we have, as, as you read in there, we have multiple lots. However, it is one family that owns all of that. This is our family and pretty much. This is our family, and pretty much everybody with the exception of about three or four of you out here...
If I may, would everyone that's related to the Burns please stand, just to see what we got, we're dealing with?
So, and these are...
Thank you, thank you.
Our property owners, uh, and our family. Um, in sixty years, uh, we've gone from two houses on this site to four. So, we've just been extravagant. We've done a hundred percent increase, uh, in density on that in sixty years. Um, the, uh, we did not, uh, oh, excuse me. We are, and we always have been, residential large lot subdivision. The restrictions imposed in the rewrite are unreasonable. Based on the comprehensive plan, we are residential. That's what we want to be. Based on Article Five of the proposed ordinance, the intent of each district, and I want to read a section out of each one, under forest and agriculture, is to encourage the formation and continuance of a compatible environment for public and recreational areas and agricultural uses. Two, to discourage any encroachment from incompatible housing, scattered commercial land or industrial, et cetera, et cetera. That's not what we are. What we are, in the same section, single-family residential, R twelve and R twenty, to be developed and reserved for low to medium-density residential purposes. District regulations designed to encourage the formation and continuation of stabi- stable, healthy environment for detached, single-family dwellings on medium-sized lots and to discourage encroachment from all other uses. That is what we are. That's what we've always been. We want to continue that. Approval of this request keeps us in compliance with your current zoning ordinance. It makes us in compliance with the existing comp plan because it is medium-density residential. And it makes us in compliance with the proposed zoning ordinance, uh, for R twenty. Please, uh, approve this request and allow us the continued use of our property as we have for the last sixty years. And thank you for my time, and then we've got two others that are gonna speak as a part of this same section.
Okay, if you would, go ahead, please.
My name is Kathy Petrie, and I live at one eight-one Burns Landing, which is this lot with my parents, who've been there for forty-some years, with my grandparents before that, the same house. And I also own a lot here, um, that was one forty-five Burns Landing. So, first I'd like to explain how our request is in harmony with the character of the neighborhood. The current use of our property has been single-family residential for over six decades. This rezoning request ensures continued residential harmony of this overall tract at a significantly lower density than the adjacent R six subdivision. Our existing lot sizes range from three-fourths of an acre, like Al said, to five acres. And this is much larger than most of the lots on the island. Our rezoning request also promotes the two thousand eighteen Glen County Comprehensive Plan Land Development Goals, specifically the future land use map designation for this tract as medium-density residential. And second, I'd like to explain why rezoning would not be detrimental to the property or persons in the area. The current single-family residential use of our properties will continue. Although a more dense zoning option would be also in compliance with the Glen County Comprehensive Plan for this property, including R nine and R twelve, we're voluntarily proposing a much lower density at R twenty. Our request for R twenty zoning requires a much larger lot size than the current zoning of adjacent parcels, both to our south, which is R six, and to our north, which is the medium-density residential. The approved Sinclair Plan Development District to our north has lot sizes that range from only thirty-six hundred square feet to the largest of twenty thousand square feet. The standard lot size in the current PD is only thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. The Burns tract is part of the Greater German Village community, and our rezoning is supported by the Village Bluff subdivision, as shown, shown in the letter of support, which was included, which I have a copy of here. And the change to R twenty will enhance and strengthen the area by preserving the current density and conformity of our existing homes and lots. There are currently four single-family homes we talked about on four lots that exceed two acres in size and ten vacant lots on the subject tract. These vacant lots have existed for nearly three decades, like Al was saying. And our homes and lots exist in full legal compliance with the current ordinance for six decades. Rezoning to R twenty will allow us to continue that and be in full compliance. Thank you for your time.
Please, if you would, if, if you're gonna say the same thing, if I, we'd like to hear some new information, please.
Right, you're gonna hear some new information, hopefully answer some questions that were not being able to be answered before on non-conformities and what's gonna happen here. Uh, more of the, the legal questions between the current ordinance and the ne- the pending ordinance. Um, first, I'm gonna summarize some additional details, as you mentioned. Um, they've already said that all of our lots and homes are currently one hundred percent legal and conforming, and they have been for six decades. With the ordinance, new ordinance, they would immediately all become one hundred percent non-conforming in multiple new ways under the proposed FA district changes. Um, although our single-family homes have always been allowed as a permitted use by right in FA, they will be demoted to a limited use in the new draft. The shortened list of permitted uses, as you saw before, animal care, church, radio tower, golf course, et cetera, produce, stay in disaster shelter, and timber harvesting, and a park, but no longer, single-family homes are on that list. You didn't see a slide of that. But if you look at the pending ordinance, single-family has been removed. FA is now classified also in the draft ordinance as a rural district and not a residential district. The primary intent, as Al summarized before, utilized and reserved for agricultural purposes, public and recreational areas. The draft excludes residential, and as we said before, our hand, land and homes are not in agricultural use. They have not been, and we don't intend to start farming at this point in our lives. Um, FA is the only district where there has been a dramatic lot size and setback changes that are proposed. These include, and there was a chart in your application, I have a larger one if you wanted something in front of you now. I've got extra copies that show the current, um, requirements for, current and proposed for R twenty, the current for FA, and the current, the draft ordinance for FA, and what the dramatic changes are. Yeah, and there's more than just what's here, and I'll quickly list these. The minimum lot size has been increased by a whopping two thousand percent from a half acre, two homes per acre, to one home per ten acres, if you're on septic. That's, there's no way with the zoning change, if you go back to the map, not a single lot, even our two and a half acres where our home is, the five acres where Kathy's home is and her parents are, or the three-quarter acre lots, none of those would be conforming under the new ordinance for that. And they never could be. I'll explain why that's a huge concern. The, the minimum lot width, as you had asked earlier, what the lot width is, is changing from one hundred feet, doubling to two hundred feet for FA. The front yard setback increased by two hundred and fifty percent from the current to the draft ordinance, from twenty to fifty feet. The side and rear yard setbacks are increasing by four hundred and thirty percent in the new ordinance, from seven to thirty feet. In short, the ordinance, proposed ordinance, will make everything non-conforming. And this is important, as was mentioned before, because section nine eleven of the draft clearly states the new ordinance is not intended to, non-conformities could continue in the short term, but the ordinance intent is not to encourage their survival. That is not language in the current ordinance. There will be no more long-term grandfathering. Section nine eleven will also not permit rebuilding of non-conforming structures, which every single home in here would become, um, if the ordinance was passed as it is, in the wake of a disaster, or, or any kind of disaster, when damage equals or exceeds fifty more, fifty percent or more of assessed value. This is another change. This means the new regulations would be triggered at only twenty percent of a home's value because assessed value is only forty percent of your market value for the tax assessor's office. This is a huge change, and if it triggers at twenty percent damage, which in today's storms could be very quick, um, then you would have to rebuild according to the new ordinance based on the new standards, all of them. We, there's no possible way to create more land where there's not enough. But somehow two and a half acres would suddenly be not enough when we have homes all over the island that are much smaller. The current ordinance uses market value to determine that threshold. That is a huge change. And it also, the proposed changes, as recently noted in the zoning review committee, could even make our homes non-insurable. That is another big factor that came out then. Um, no Glen County residents should have to live in fear of not only losing their home in a natural disaster or a fire, but losing absolutely everything when they're not allowed to rebuild on land they have owned, legally conformed to ordinances, and paid taxes on for six decades. Section nine eleven also states that non-conforming uses may not be enlarged upon, expanded, nor extended. Despite being fully legal at the time of adoption, homes made non-conforming under the draft ordinance could not be enlarged or even accessory uses added. This means, this is very important for multigenerational families, you can see, where we've got sometimes three generations in one home out there. We could not add on to those homes to care for aging family members so that they could age in place. This is a goal stated in the draft, um, diagnostic study, that that was one of the goals of the new zoning, was to allow people to age in place. That would be the opposite of what occurred here if we're not residential. So, in summary, we're not asking to change our land use. Our zoning standards of six decades are being changed on us. We want to emphasize that R twenty and FA requirements are the same in the current, current ordinance as shown in the chart that we included in our application. Our parcels and homes are in full compliance with both the current and draft ordinance provisions for R twenty, which are unchanged in the draft. There were no changes in setbacks in lot area for R twenty. Uh, rezoning to R twenty will stop unnecessary stress among the family members, comply with the comp plan future land use map, which is important, and more accurately reflect the reality of our property use. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, do we have any questions for the applicant before we turn it over to a public hearing?
Well, I do. Mr. Burns, if you... I just wanna say, I, you know, I think you're doing the right thing. If it was my property, I'd be doing the same thing, protect it. So, I don't think anybody has an issue with that, and I hope you have anticipated that this might come up, that a month or so ago, with the property north of y'all, you, you asked for conditions on the development of that property. And I hope, I plan to, to, as part of a motion, to require the same conditions on this property. That, I think it was eight to five, any work done Monday through Friday, and, uh, no burning. And I think that's only fair, uh, compared to your neighbors. And I, you know, I don't think you're gonna rush out there and start building all these houses, but at some point you will. And it probably would be a benefit more to the people south of you, to the ones north. But I think it, you know, uh, I think it's only fair to impose the same conditions on your property that you've asked for on somebody else's property, and I just wanted you to know that. But I, I plan to, uh, even when the motion's made, I plan to have those conditions applied to the motion. So, you know, not that it's a punitive thing, I think it's only fair.
Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing nine, we'll open this up for a public hearing. I assume all the family is very much in favor of this. And, uh, I'm, I'm hoping that we don't have to hear from everybody, but if there's anybody that has anything to add that is for this application. Uh, failing that, all, all in favor of the application, just raise your hand. All right, okay, that's good. All right, anybody opposed that would like to come forward? Yes, yes, sir, please.
I came in late, so I missed part of it. Is all that R six residential zoning part of the twenty-two point...
Please, please state your name.
Oh, uh, first name Vincent, last name Albo. And I apologize again, had an unexpected visitor, so I came in late. So, was all that R six development part of the twenty-two point four acres?
No, no, it is not.
Okay, well, then, had some notes outlined here, and then we'll get to what you had said before. Uh, previously, like thirty years ago, there was a ninety-day moratorium on development because things were just getting out of hand. So, keep that in mind, in mind. And now, wondering who profits from this is, if you're selling land for, nope, okay, so it's not to developers. But then there was another time that somebody says it's good for business. Well, I'm thinking, well, all the business is mostly the south end of the island, the village. There is that business area right by County, uh, Frederica and Sea Island roads. But you put development up there, there's no place to shop. But I think it's been zoned out of the northern end of the island. You can't have a grocery store up there. So, it puts all the increased traffic and such down in the village. It's like I said, there's no parking for the retail business, the restaurants, they're already crowded enough, you can't get in. So, what's that cost to, well, it's the island residents that have to put up with the extra, uh, traffic and stuff. If it's twenty thousand square feet per acre, that came out to like forty-seven homes that could be built out there. But if you're proposing thirty-three thousand five hundred, that brings it down maybe thirty houses.
No, please, please direct the questions to us, and we'll, and we'll, and we'll get back with the applicant during, during the rebuttal.
Yeah, so, if they would like to rebut and answer my questions, I'm sorry. So, given what happens when you're doing more development on the island, that's the traffic, the, the crowded, uh, point out that now Sea Island Frederica Road Circle is in proposal. That's been done a couple of times before. The, the entire island gateway is now under proposal. So, you're gonna spend millions of dollars more to handle increased traffic that, going back to the ninety-day moratorium thirty years ago, you don't know what's gonna happen. So, you might be spending millions and millions of dollars more as more and more development goes on. Um, let's see, now, that one map said land trust, land to the north. Uh, land trust, to my knowledge, doesn't do development, so that land is protected as it is forever. Um, okay, so it might be only thirty houses instead of forty-eight houses, forty-seven. Uh, in the last sixty years, the family's been there for sixty years. They've seen what's happened to the island, and I'm sure they've... Well, I can't speak for them, I won't say that. But what's happened to the island density, um, this, the shopping, the parking, it's just getting way too crowded, and then there's the, you want to keep the quality of life for the residents, for the county part. Grandfathering, I will withdraw most of my comments if existing things can't go on, um, under new ordinances and such. It, um, but there is a lot of, was, was that, um, perspective changes for grandfathering? Some, that's something you'll answer. Uh, and, something else just off the top of my head here. I don't know what the previous zoning was, but if this, um, zoning was changed to forest agricultural just four years ago, uh, did the applicant subject to changing of the zoning? And in summary, like I'm opposed to more development on the island for what I've said already, but then I gotta quote Yogi Berra, says, "Nobody goes there, it's too crowded." All right?
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak in opposition to this application? Uh, Mr. Burns, if you'll step, uh, step back up, uh, this, this will be the, uh, the rebuttal process. Um, and Mr. Albo brought up primarily just development. Is, is there any plans for you to, to, to do any development soon, or have you got any?
No, and, and the thing is, and for your sake, each one of these lots is owned separately. So, we can't agree what day of the week it is, uh, most of the time. So, it's, uh, to pull everything together, uh, with all the different owners in there. But the main thing that you missed is that this portion of it, where the smaller lots are, that are thirty-three thousand five hundred square feet, were all deeded to us by our grandmother. And so, there's a lot of sentimental value in this. And on the same side, the other half of the family, um, their mother is deeding all of this to her children.
half of the family, their mother is beaming all of this to her children. So that's, it's basically going to continue as a family property.
Mr. Burns, if you would address your comments.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
That's fine.
And this is the current subdivision, and we don't have any plans to make any changes.
Right, and I'd like to make a couple of comments. One is, is there is a draft ordinance out there. It has not been passed. There has been a lot of discussion about FA. I can tell you, it's a lot, and I dare say that perhaps there's going to be some changes to what's currently written, along with a lot of changes. And if you've watched any of the proceedings so far, you've seen that there's been a lot of discussion about a lot of, a lot of what is in that draft ordinance now. So, so just in saying that, we don't know what it's going to, the final edition's going to look like yet, but there are going to be changes. In saying that, I guess, I guess if there was no, if there was no zoning change at all, you could, you could subdivide that property now to 20,000 square foot lots.
Yes.
And I believe that's a correct statement based on the current zoning. Right, Mark?
Yeah, that's correct. If we had, and to develop it, you're going to have to put in infrastructure, there's a lot of things that would have to happen to, if we did want to develop it.
Chairman, I'm sure. For a moment, yeah. As I put in my review comments, there are access issues for the internal lots that would have to be worked out before houses could even be put on there, before building permits would even be issued.
Right, okay.
So, so a lot of those lots can't even be developed at the current time.
Right, and also, I believe all those lots are currently on septic tank?
The four houses in there are all on septic tank and wells.
And I believe the state standard is one acre, all right?
Right, the current standard is one acre for well and septic.
Right, so, so if you didn't develop it with water and sewer, you would be limited to one-acre lots anyway.
And more than likely, that part of the island, you'd need more than an acre to get, to get enough field to make it work, and get you proper separation.
So 20,000 square foot lots without water and sewer, probably not, not practical.
No. You currently, I don't think you'd be able to build on any of these current, the 33,000 square foot lots.
Right. Any other questions for Mr. Burns? This is rebuttal. Thank you, sir. That'll conclude the public hearing.
If there's no other discussion, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Recommend approval of the proposed zoning decision with modifications or conditions, which are any development would be between eight to five, Monday through Friday, no weekend work, and no burning.
A second?
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, all right. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion necessary. Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right.
They want to stay and hear what you guys say about the zoning.
The zoning update. I already said what I was going to say, I think. And Bryce, you can help me out on this. We have had, I guess, the third meeting where we actually discussed zoning ordinances yesterday. There's, there's a lot in there, and I think we've got a lot of, a lot of pushback, a lot of questions with what's there. We are slowly going through it. It looks like it's going to be a long process.
Very long, very long.
Yeah. And we had, I think, six items on the agenda for yesterday. We made it through three without making many decisions at all, really. So it's, it's, it's going to take a while. The final, the final draft will look somewhat different than what you've currently seen. There, I think, I think we've got some very practical-minded people that are on this review committee. We would like to hear from anyone that has any comments about any of it. We'd like to hear from you. We've got an access on the website, the county's website, so if you've got something you want to say about anything, it sounds like there's some comments about FA you'd like to make, we'd like to hear.
Please email us, put it in writing.
Yes.
Email us, that'd be great.
The writing helps. And I guess that's, that's about it. Bryce, you got anything you want to add?
You can take Ms. Burns's summary.
Yeah. Would you, would you email that to us, please? That would be great, yes, yes. Any help that anybody would like to give is appreciated, because I think you could read it over and over and over and over again and find something new each time. So it's going to be a long process, unfortunately.
Anyone else have any questions? Do you all have any questions about the new zoning draft? Do you want to ask us while we're up here talking? Anything? All right, you just want to get out and celebrate, right?
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I might, to your point, if people, maybe they wouldn't know this, but if they email those comments, those are read at the meeting during the public comment period, so they don't just get to staff or they're read out loud at the public comment period as well.
Right, we are going to have, of course, everyone's invited to our Monday meetings. We meet at 4 o'clock. If, and I'm sure some of you have probably seen some of them, but we meet at 4 o'clock Monday. We try to hold it to a two-hour meeting. We will have a public, a public forum. Stephanie, when's the date for that?
July 11th.
July 11th. That'll be at the library downtown. All's invited, and you can come and speak to about anything in that new ordinance that you might see that you would like to, like to comment. I don't have anything else to add? Move the adjourn. Second?
Second.
Adjourn.